Folks, you're listening to Hysteria, the podcast for people who know that MTLA is not a car. Alyssa, it does sound like a car, but it is a law.
It really does. An old car, right? I don't even think they make them anymore.
Yeah, they stopped making them in 87. They replaced them with the Saturn. Do you remember the Saturn?
Of course I do. Very hot car my freshman year of college.
Yeah. Hmm. What happened to it? I don't know. Okay. So Alyssa, we're not going to spend too much time on this because I, you and I probably are on the same page here. The political media is already spending way too much time on this and it affects, it directly affects so few Americans' lives.
A hundred percent.
But it is a predictable circus and it's easy to set up cameras there and it's easy to just like form your A block around it every night. So why not? Why not talk about this instead of important things that actually impact people? But it is sort of funny, which is important. It's important to laugh.
We have to laugh.
We have to laugh. Donald Trump hasn't been on trial for that long, just, you know, a couple of weeks. You know, jury selection and the arguments only started, you know, this week or testimony only started this week. But he's already violated his gag order at least 11 times, maybe more by the time people are hearing this. At this point, should we call this compulsion a gag reflex?
But a bump. That was, yes, obviously. The man can't help himself. He is like, it is like he's in kindergarten and the teacher just keeps writing, Donald talks too much in class.
I'm gonna go back to my Breakfast Club analogy. He is the Judd Nelson character yelling, no, no. And continuing to get more and more detention and eventually he's probably gonna have to go to jail. But he wants to go to jail because he, his supporters will think he's like Nelson Mandela.
And we know he is, he is not.
There's a lot of differences between Donald Trump and Nelson Mandela.
So many.
In this essay, I will. Let's, let's get to stuff that actually impacts people's lives. It's not as flashy and there's not as much farting or falling asleep, hopefully, but it is important stuff and it really highlights what a president can actually do.
Yes.
So Alyssa, let's get into it.
All right, Erin, this week, the Biden administration has been making some big healthcare moves. First and foremost, the HIPAA privacy rule to support reproductive healthcare privacy, which is a new rule that states that someone's reproductive healthcare history cannot be disclosed and thus used against them. Well, Erin, this is good news. Seems like something that's sort of been in effect since 1996, but that's okay. We have to make the point over and over again and Joe Biden and HHS are doing just that. So for example, if someone leaves a state with an abortion ban to get an abortion elsewhere, that will not be an issue for them when they return to their home state.
As long as there's a Democratic president.
As long as there is a Democratic president.
So like Ken Paxton can't subpoena your medical records from New Mexico.
Nope.
Under this rule.
Under this rule.
Okay.
If Donald Trump became president, he could rescind the rule.
Okay.
So we have, this is important.
Okay. Question. Why didn't Joe Biden already do this like a while ago? I don't know. You might not know the answer to this.
Erin, at the end of every rainbow is a pot of gold. Like, look, but here's the thing. This is like very specifically about abortion. To me, if you read HIPAA, it is already covered, right? I feel like they are making this expressly the point because Republicans are making him make it expressly the point. Because if you, let's go through what HIPAA actually is. HIPAA is a federal law that required the creation of national standards to protect sensitive patient information from being disclosed without the patient's consent or knowledge.
Okay.
In theory, shouldn't that have already taken care of things?
Right. Healthcare providers are, healthcare providers under this law and insurance, you know, administrators or whatever. Anybody that's directly involved in your healthcare is not allowed to disclose.
No.
Your HIPAA, the thing about HIPAA is like HIPAA is not a, a school asking if your kid's vaccinated. Like that's not a HIPAA.
Exactly.
HIPAA would be like a school asking your doctor if your kid is vaccinated and the doctor telling you.
Right.
Okay.
HIPAA also, interestingly, is like, if you have health insurance through your company, your company can't hold whatever procedures you're getting against you. Like.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah. So if you work for Hobby Lobby and you were out there getting in a Bobo, you can't, Hobby Lobby can't find out from your, I believe, I don't think they provide insurance, to be honest with you.
They probably don't. But if that were the case, that would be the case.
Exactly. They don't believe in barcodes. I don't think they believe in any, it's true. I don't shop at Hobby Lobby for like obvious reasons.
Totally.
But if you go to Hobby Lobby, they don't have barcodes on their products because they believe that it's like the mark of the beast. I swear to you.
That is some wild shit. I did not know that.
It's, it's real. I would discourage anybody from going into Hobby Lobby unless they're just going to like goof around and make funny videos. But yeah, you will see that they do not have barcodes at Hobby Lobby. Okay. So this is good. We have some Biden administration clarification, like, hey, healthcare providers cannot violate your privacy. This means you, Ken Paxton.
Yeah, I'm looking at you, Ken Paxton. Looking at you.
Okay. And so we've got another pretty big rule clarification or rule enhancement this week also.
Enhancement. Enhancement. I was very into this the more I was reading about it. So Erin, the Biden administration has now implemented a staff minimum for nursing homes. Okay. Nursing homes are regulated by the federal government and have had severe staffing shortages specifically since COVID, right? So doesn't this seem like easy breezy? Like who the fuck would object to this? Well, Erin, there are people who object to it. Critics say that the minimum might cause struggling nursing homes to shut down. Well, okay. So of course I was like, there's more to this. So Erin, we have over 15,000 nursing homes in the U.S., which are again regulated by the federal government, which pays for a majority of stays through Medicare and Medicaid. Okay. So as an example, though, in the staffing of it all, the rule would mandate that a facility with 100 patients had 10 to 11 nurses on duty per shift, registered nurses. Well, this seems very correct, right? Like, why is this a big deal? I'm like, why would, why would they not want people to have proper care? Then I realized, okay, so according to Fortune magazine, 1.3 million Americans are residents in nursing homes, of which 72% are owned by four profit groups. So Erin, they don't want our elderly to have nurses because they might make less profit.
I learned this from Better Call Saul, the incredible Bob Odenkirk show that I, I stopped watching because it was moving too slowly. But I did learn this from Better Call Saul. It does seem a little fucked that nursing homes are seen as a
Profit center.
Profit center. But I think that anybody who has encountered the long-term care industry sees it for what it is, which is a giant wealth transfer scheme.
Yeah, totally.
Because in order to qualify for Medicare and Medicaid and have like the government pay for a nursing home, you need to have no assets. Like you have to have all of your assets spent down. Now, in some states, if you are married and your partner is not in the nursing home, your partner is allowed to stay in your house.
Yes.
In other, like, but if you, for example, sold your house to, you know, or gave your house to the kids or whatever, nursing homes have and Medicaid have like a look back period.
Yep.
So if you are starting, you fall and break your hip and you're like, oh shit, I don't want to have to like lose everything I was going to leave to my kids so that I can qualify for Medicaid and you kind of panicked and try to unload your assets. No, they're coming for them.
Erin, this is the reason. So my oma went through this after my opa was in a nursing home for a long time. And she was like eight years younger than him. So at this point, when she realized this was the case, they were not remotely wealthy people. That's when the cash started being hidden in the freezer and cookie jars and wherever she could find. She had a map to where all the cash was, just in case.
Oh my gosh. Yeah. It's, it's like, it's really, there are a lot of people in the millennial generation right now. Gen X for sure is dealing with this, but older millennials are starting to experience this. You're probably not getting most of your parents' money.
No.
No. A nursing home is, a nursing home is.
Yep.
Like you're probably not getting your, you're just not getting that.
You're not. Because also though, and like if you think about it, people are also now like, mm, love my kids, but would rather have, based on how bad some nursing homes are, would rather have a home healthcare worker. So like, guess what? I paid for you to go to college. I helped you go to college. I'm getting myself a home healthcare worker. You are not getting inheritance.
Well, right. But also part of the reason people prefer home healthcare workers is because it is usually, it's, it's better care. And part of the reason it's better care is because so many nursing homes, there was like no standard. The standard was like, ah, just, you know, keep, take care of them. But the people that were supposed to be looking into whether or not residents were actually being cared for, were not even like visiting the nursing homes. They weren't even visiting the facilities. And there are people getting rich off of long-term care. It is not the CNAs. It is not the LPNs. And in most cases, it's probably, it's not the RNs either. The RNs are like making a decent life for themselves in some cases. But they're not like buying up properties. They're not like becoming moguls. They're not like zipping around in BMWs.
No.
Long-term care facility owners and administrators are though. And they might have to, I guess, downsize.
Downsize their profits. Someone tells me they're, they're still gonna be rich though.
They're still gonna figure out a way to be rich because there's always people, they, they just always do. That's their job. That's their like mental disorder is.
Yeah.
The only thing they care about is figuring out a way to be rich. They don't care about the product. They don't care about the care that they're providing. But at least they're gonna, you know, I don't know. Something that, that does, something that does kind of get to me about this is Jon Tester, Democratic Senator from Montana, missing part of one of his fingers, peed in front of a reporter one time who was doing a profile of him on purpose. Jon Tester, he did make a point that there are rural areas that are seriously experiencing worker shortages. Like there just aren't people there to work in these nursing homes. And I'm gonna, I could say, I'm not from Montana, but where I grew up, it's, the town where I grew up is very old. It's getting older. There are, young people don't live there. People don't have their kids there. Like, it's just not, there's not very many workers and I know that they're trying to make like child labor more legal. But the truth is that there aren't enough people who are able-bodied, who are adults, who have the qualifications to like work in places like this. And the only way that they're going to be able to attract workers like that is to somehow attract them from cities. And the only way they're going to be able to do that is by paying them a lot of money.
Yeah.
But you know what? Tough titties. Sorry.
Tough titties. I mean, look, Erin, where I live, our local hospital does not have a maternity ward. You have to drive an hour to deliver your baby.
Hospital in your town? That's nice.
I wouldn't. It's, it's a, it is an emergency care facility. It is not a trauma facility.
Yeah. There is no hospital in the town where I grew up. There used to be. That's where I was born, in that hospital. And I think the closest one is now half an hour away. But if like something happened to my parents, I'm like, I don't think I would want them in that hospital.
Well, that's my hospital.
Oh, that's your hospital.
That's where we're at. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. That's, that's if you need like, you know, little Jimmy fell down the stairs and needs some stitches on his chin.
Yeah. I was in a car accident and not bleeding, so I went to our, our hospital.
Oh, okay. 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 Woof. All right. Um, let's see. What else are we going to talk about today? Oh, California. We, you know.
Yes.
California is, I like living here. I gotta say, it's expensive. A lot of it, a lot of aspects of it are very stupid, but sometimes our state government does things and I'm like, this is cool and I like it. California Governor Gavin Newsom is really good at trolling, I think. And he is really good at trolling governors of conservative states. He trolled Ron DeSantis until it became mean. And then I think he backed off a little bit where it was just like, stop, stop.
DeSantis couldn't take it.
Stop, stop. He's already dead. Like one of those situations. But California right now in, and in the very near future, is seeing an influx of abortion patients from the state of Arizona. And part of that is because the state Supreme Court of Arizona, as people who listen to the show know, recently ruled that an 1864 abortion ban, a ban that was written before people even knew how pregnancy worked, before people even knew a clitoris existed, a ban that was written, I think, when people thought the uterus moved around the human body, depending on what kind of mood a lady was in.
Those were the days.
And that if she was having mental health problems, wasn't that her life was terrible and she was basically human chattel? It was because her uterus was driving her crazy. This is the, you know, the backdrop of this law being written. The Supreme Court ruled that it should go into effect in Arizona. That's going to cause some real problems for abortion providers and reproductive healthcare providers in California, who are already kind of slammed from people from other states coming in. But Governor Gavin Newsom is working on a proposal that would let Arizona doctors administer abortions in California. So you are a medical provider who suddenly can't do your job because a bunch of state legislators have decided that your job is illegal. You can come over here. Go ahead and do what you're, do what you're gonna do. Help people.
He is solving problems.
He's solving problems indeed. Another person that's solving some problems is our AG, Rob Bonta. Rob Bonta has been low-key going to war against anti-trans school boards. And it is a lot of fun to watch from here. So an anti-trans parents' rights organization, and that's in heavy sarcasm quotes, organization, introduced a ballot measure called the Protect Kids of California Act. And that ridiculously named proposal would out-trans kids to their parents if they use different pronouns, a different name or a different bathroom. And it would prevent trans kids from playing on the sports team of their choice and prevent trans kids from accessing gender-affirming care before turning 18. Now, one of the AG's jobs in California is to take a look at ballot measures and make sure they have a name that adequately describes what they do. Bonta saw this and he changed the name from Protect Kids of California Act to the Restrict Rights of Transgender Youth Initiative. The anti-trans organization that wrote the original name was pretty mad and they sued their.
Where's the lie? Where's the lie?
And that is exactly what a judge said. There was a judge in California tentatively ruled on Friday that Bonta's renaming actually matched the contents of the measure.
Like word for word.
The judge wrote, "Under current law, minor students have expressed statutory rights with respect to their gender identity. A substantial portion of the proposed measure is dedicated to eliminating or restricting those statutory rights." Ergo, ergo, the Restrict Rights of Transgender Youth Initiative, which is unsurprisingly having a difficult time gathering signatures necessary to pass. So.
Well, there you have it. Sometimes, Erin, the easiest thing is the most effective thing. Just call the bill what it is.
I agree. And I think that's like a really good, I think it's a really good troll. Also, can I just say, if you are a parent and your child is not telling you that they are change, they're using a different pronoun or using a different name, take a look at yourself and your parenting.
Hundred percent.
Like, that is a reflection on, that's a reflection on you. That is not the school's fault. Your kids don't trust you. Um, I wonder why that could be, you know?
Exactly.
Okay. One more thing before we take a quick break and get to our interview with the lovely and wonderful Jasmine Crockett. Alyssa.
Yeah, ma'am.
There is a Supreme Court argument happening on Wednesday as we're recording this.
Yes.
What's going on? It's really important. Tell the people what they need to know.
Okay. As we are recording, the U.S. Supreme Court is hearing oral arguments about the conflict between the Federal Emergency Medical Treatment and Labor Act, or MTLA, and Idaho's almost blanket abortion ban. Now, Erin, we have talked about this in some, Idaho in 2022 passed legislation that made it illegal for a physician to administer an abortion unless the pregnant person is literally on their deathbed. Now, very dangerous because we know, Erin, that in some of these states, literal deathbed means literal deathbed. Not a euphemism. Like you literally have to be dying before they're like, okay, I guess. But so many doctors are putting themselves in jeopardy because at what point are they gonna have to prove if someone tries to get them with these vigilante laws that they actually, that person was on their deathbed? So anyway, MTLA requires hospitals to offer patients stabilizing care when facing health risks. For example, potential loss of reproductive organs, which can happen if someone can't get an abortion when they need it. So here's the thing. This contradiction was brought to SCOTUS. In January, the judges ruled, under the radar, without oral arguments, that Idaho's law should take effect again, even though federal law should trump state law according to the Constitution's supremacy clause. Erin, the supremacy clause is having a moment.
It really is. Um, it really is. And I, and I kind of wonder when, as we talk about the supremacy clause, if the Supreme Court really coming down with the hammer and being like, no dude, federal government is in charge. I wonder if in like two years, we're gonna be like, oh shit, they didn't weaken the supremacy clause enough for states with sane people. Like, the supremacy clause keeps places like Idaho from dictating the way that everything should go.
Exactly.
In the U.S. Because the federal government can make a law that's like, no, actually, like, let's imagine that this had something to do with anything but abortion. No, actually, you can't refuse to pull a tooth out of somebody's head until they are going to lose their lower jaw. You know, like you have to do it. Like if you see that there's a problem, you have to treat the problem when it's a problem. You don't have to wait, like, you can't fix it. And I, I think that that's, that's good because it prevents like, you know, people from being trapped in states that are just run by complete fanatics.
Right.
Hypothetically. But as we're seeing on the ground, it doesn't actually. Because in Idaho, we're seeing some pretty bad outcomes for pregnant patients who need abortion as a treatment for what, what is wrong. A topic pregnancy. The treatment is abortion. There are specific issues that a pregnant mother can have, like hypertension that is caused by a pregnancy. If it's before the point of viability, the only treatment for that is abortion.
Right.
And I think a lot of people making rules banning abortion don't understand what abortion is and what abortion does. Because it is a treatment for things in some cases.
Yeah. And like, and the thing about this case is, Erin, right now, this is just dealing with Idaho. If the Supreme Court does not reverse the decision, this could have, impact every and any state whose laws are at odds with MTLA.
Specifically Texas, specifically and most, you know, on the largest scale, Texas. This is really, really dangerous. If I were a woman living in Texas, I would be thinking long and hard about whether I have the ability to no longer live in Texas.
Right.
Because this is scary shit. This is really scary shit.
This is literally life or death.
There was an AP story that ran a few days ago about how people, hospitals are so scared to treat pregnant patients now because of all the ridiculous laws around abortion and how sloppily they're written. They're afraid to treat pregnant patients and so they're turning them away.
Yeah.
And one woman had to miscarry in a bathroom because she was turned away from an emergency room.
Horrific.
Yeah. It is, it is like against federal law, but hospitals are so shit scared of running afoul of state law that they're like.
When according to the supremacy clause, their stupid laws should be superseded by federal laws. So.
Yeah. You know, I was listening to some of the oral arguments this morning and there was a really interesting moment between Sonia Sotomayor and Amy Coney Barrett, weirdly.
What'd she have to say?
Well, in the Crooked Media Slack, Jon Favreau referred to it as a hot dog guy moment from Amy Coney Barrett, but we'll take it. Sonia Sotomayor was pressing Idaho's counsel about how much leeway doctors have. And the counsel kind of was like, well, it's on a case-by-case basis. And so Sotomayor was like, well, this woman came in, she needed emergency care and she ended up having to get a hysterectomy. If she, what would have happened if she could have just had the abortion before, she wouldn't have had a hysterectomy. And the guy was like, doctors make judgments, blah, 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 blah. And Amy Coney Barrett was like, no, no, no. But what about, I thought that this was like written in as an exception. And he was like, well, yeah, he just like sounded very stupid. Yeah. And Amy Coney Barrett was like, I think what she's asking is this. And he couldn't like, he kept trying to have it both ways. And he sounded like a big idiot. And it was, as Favreau said, a hot dog guy moment from Amy Coney Barrett. We are all, we're all trying to figure out who did this. Anyway, I think that's all the time we have for news today. We're gonna get into Veepstake stuff, but I feel like President Trump's.
Next week. He's exhausting.
President Trump is gonna treat his vice president like a hand puppet regardless of who he chooses. And we've got like a long runway. I mean, I guess maybe if there was like a really bad news story that was about to break about him, he might make a VP announcement to try to distract from it, but whatever, we've still got some time. So we'll talk about that.
He loves a beauty pageant. He's gonna milk this for all it's worth.
Yeah, he does. He loves a beauty pageant. He loves a reality TV contest. He loves people humiliating themselves to win his favor. And then he loves like rejecting them. It's very weird. But we will talk more about that in the future. We're gonna take a quick break. And when we come back, our interview with Texas Representative Jasmine Crockett. And welcome back. You're listening to Hysteria, the podcast for people who will always show up to troll anti-choice old men by pointing out that a Viagra ban makes more sense than an abortion ban. Our guest today is a lawyer and a Congresswoman representing the 30th District of Texas, covering Dallas and more. She is a founding member of the Texas Progressive Caucus, as well as the freshman leadership representative, making her one of the few black women ever elected to Democratic House leadership. Representative Jasmine Crockett, welcome to Hysteria.
Hi, Erin.
So, so glad you're here. We've wanted you on for a really long time. This is great that you're here. So one thing we hear as millennial women who care about politics is that we should run for something. But nowadays, it kind of feels like running for something would feel like throwing yourselves to the wolves. So what sparked your interest in running for office? And what gives you the courage to keep being outspoken despite how ruthless partisan media can be?
Yeah, I still bang my head against the wall every once in a while, trying to think like, girl, what were you doing? Listen, I, I definitely did not run because I had some aspirations of ever being involved in politics. I never took a poly-soc course. I really wasn't a big history buff either. But one of the things that made me say is, is really my experiences being a lawyer, practicing law. And I was consistently frustrated and disappointed. And I said, I can continue to complain or I can do something about it. And for me, doing something about it was going to a legislative body and being able to rewrite the laws. And so I decided to run for the Texas State House. I absolutely did not know what I was getting myself into. I will admit that I was green, green, green. I thought I was gonna change the world. And then when it came time to go to the U.S. House, even though I had served in the Texas House, I still was very green. And I don't know if I was so much green as we have really experienced a dramatic shift in politics in just from the 117th to the 118th. And I would say that your heart has to be in this. You have to have something that grounds you beyond the title to be able to do it. Because you have to deal with people constantly tearing you down and sometimes even issuing death threats. That's not the world that we should live in, but that is the world that we are living in right now.
What issues are the most near and dear to you?
Well, you started it off. Definitely repro, you know, being someone who I think I can still have children. I'm not really sure. I haven't tried lately. But definitely being a reproductive age woman who lives in the state of Texas, it has to be just a big issue. We have a rich history when it comes to repro in this state with Roe v. Wade being a Texas case that came out of my district. So definitely repro. In addition to that, as a black woman who's been thoroughly engaged in civil rights, it's, it's voting access in general, right? Like, do we have access to the ballot box? Do we have access to fair lines? That's been a big issue for me. And still along the civil rights lines is gonna be the diversity, equity, inclusion attacks that we have seen on people of color consistently. And tied in with that, I guess I'm just hair on fire over here. Tied in with that for sure is going to be the LGBTQIA community. It has been heartbreaking to me to see the attacks that have been waged against children. Children that are trans specifically and attacking any type of child as an adult that's elected to protect and look out for people is just wild to me. But definitely it's just overall our civil rights and civil liberties that are under attack. And those are the things that are kind of front of mind for me.
On the DEI point, does it kind of seem like being the anti-DEI side of things is sort of like dog whistle for trying to prevent people of color and women from being visible parts of public life?
I don't know that it's dog whistle. It's absolute outright racism.
Yeah.
That's, that's what it is. You know, that's, that's the thing about the, the Trump era of politics. era of politics. You know, there are those that say that, you know, Trump ushered in racism. He really didn't. What he did is gave license to those that had been wearing hoods to go ahead and take their hoods off and just be who they are. And we are seeing this type of rhetoric and, and the policies permeate on every level, whether we're talking about banning books that accurately teach history, when we're looking at our school boards, or whether we're talking about legislatures that don't want black and brown people at their schools unless they are going to play basketball and football for them and make sure that they're winning titles. Or if we're talking about literally saying, hey, these Ivy League institutions that now have some semblance of diversity, we don't want your kind here, go somewhere else. It is bewildering to me because I was born into a world where we were building upon the progress that had been made by those original civil rights warriors. And now we're living in a world in which they're trying to turn back the hands of time on, and not trying to. They have begun to turn back the hands of time on all the progress that was made by people that lost their lives, risked their lives, were incarcerated, spent money they didn't have on making sure that they could really file these important cases that had been precedents for safeguarding and giving opportunity to people of color in a country that is becoming more colorful. This is what they've decided to do.
You recently caught attention for comparing Mifepristone to Viagra during a House Oversight Committee hearing, saying how the abortion pill that they're trying to ban is actually far more necessary and life-saving and safer than an erectile dysfunction pill that really doesn't have a legit medical need. Like, it's not saving anybody's life. Did you think that you would get the opportunity to talk about erectile dysfunction in the House of Representatives?
Definitely wasn't on my bucket list. I, I, no, I did not. But I did think that it was important because it's one of those conversations that everyday people are having all the time. And as someone who did the research and knows that when it comes down to Viagra, it's 10 times more problematic as far as the, the health risks that are associated with Mifepristone. And so while it's 10 times more dangerous than Mifepristone, it actually saves more lives or has the ability to save more lives. By the time you're talking about someone potentially using Mifepristone, it potentially is to save her life, not all the time, obviously, but it potentially is. And, and while erectile dysfunction may in some men's minds save their lives, it's not life-saving. It's not, you know? I mean, if you're using it, they do have some, what you would consider like off-label usages for it to make sure, because of the amount of blood flow that is initiated with the pill, there are some folk that use it for more life-saving purposes, but specifically for erectile dysfunction, that it's not a life-saving purpose.
Oh, my gosh. I wonder what your Google search history looked like as you were researching. You probably are on a list. How? So let's, let's pivot to Texas. You talked about reproductive justice. How are your constituents in Texas handling the bleak reproductive rights landscape in their state right now?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think that it's hard to, to hear about repro and the lack of access and not think of Texas. Because on the front lines of this fight have been specifically Dallasites, right? Kate Cox is a Dallasite. Dr. Deneard is also a Dallasite. And for those that are listening that may not quite remember who's who, but Dr. Deneard is an OBGYN who was married to an OBGYN who was seeking an abortion because it was medically necessary as determined by, say, professionals in the field and was denied that access and had to flee the state and is involved in litigation. Same thing with Kate Cox, except she's not an OBGYN. But these are two women that were trying to increase the size of their families, absolutely wanted these children, and were literally risking their lives by staying in the state of Texas and being denied access to the healthcare that they needed. These are Dallas women. So I will say that in Texas, the, 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 the part of this that people don't talk about enough is why a Kate Cox or why a Dr. Deneard didn't just leave the state and do what they had to do. Why is it that the entire country knows their names? Why is it that the entire country knows their stories? And it is because both of these women have been so committed, them along with other Texas women, have been committed to making sure that they wage this fight because they understand that there are people in my district, which my district, 20% of my district live at or below poverty, people that won't have the same level of privilege and access that they have to be able to leave the state if they need this life-saving care. And they decided that while they would always have a parachute that they could hop into, they wanted to look out for so many women in my district that may not have a golden parachute themselves. And I think that that is the part of the story that most people aren't talking about. But that is probably the most beautiful part of the story that needs to be applauded because you're seeing women that are thinking about themselves in this moment, but they're thinking about the fact that this is actually bigger than themselves as individuals. And so I, I am really proud of the women in Texas for how they are handling this. And I tell people all the time, especially when I go to rallies, it was Texas women that saved us before. I believe that it will be Texas women that will save us again. And so that's what I'm looking forward to, is I'm looking forward to the clapback. And I'm looking forward to Rovember and really sending a very strong message throughout the country that we refuse to go back to the 1800s. We refuse to go back to a point in time where we literally were nothing more than our husbands' property. We still haven't gotten to a place in this country where women are experiencing equal pay or, or full equality in general. And, and the fact that you were taking us back when we still hadn't even achieved our maximum freedom in this country is wild and is ridiculous. And I, I am so excited to see women rise up.
It sounds like women in your district are fired up in a way that maybe isn't getting coverage nationally. Like, are you seeing a lot of engagement? Are people reaching out to you and being like, how do I get involved? How do I fight this?
So I don't see a bunch of that. And I'll tell you why. I mean, we've got those that are engaged in the litigation. I think it was, we found out when they passed the vigilante bill, or I shouldn't say we, a lot of people found out when they passed the vigilante bill, which was kind of the first step in Texas kind of going in the wrong direction on this issue, that we can't do ballot agenda issues like this. Like, we can't put it on the ballot. And so the most that we get to do is we get to go out, we get to protest, we get to go and talk to our lawmakers. But we are prevented from actually having the full strength of our voices being heard. Because we can't do what Arizona is doing. We can't do what Florida is doing. We're, we're disallowed. And so I do think that that is why you see Dr. The Dr. Deneards and the Kate Cox of the world that decide that this is the way that we're going to push back. This is going to be our advocacy and our contribution.
All right, pivoting to the House of Representatives, you alluded to this earlier, but it seems like a pretty chaotic place these days, just from the outside as an outsider. How do you actually get?
Hands on the inside, honey. Hands on the side, but go ahead.
Okay, good. I was going to say, is it as chaotic as it seems? And how do you actually get things done amid the chaos?
You, you thought that we got something done? I mean, it's, it's the most unproductive house maybe ever. Definitely modern day. Definitely unproductive. And, you know, I think the, the person that needs to be asked on how do we get anything done is really Hakeem Jeffries. Again, another kind of unsung hero in the story of the 118th is people don't really know like how sophisticated of a negotiator he is. And it is why I do everything that I can to strengthen my leader and make sure he's in the best position. Because if he's best positioned, then the American people are best positioned. And he's always able to come up with a reasonable negotiation. But, you know, it's a lot easier and MAGA hasn't figured it out, that Speaker Johnson is like, you know what, I'm over y'all. Like, it is too hard. You were never satisfied. Y'all gonna keep holding this little speakership over my head. Let me just go talk to the other side. I don't even need all of them. I just need about four or five. And I got, I got cushion with four or five, right? But you gotta go talk to Hakeem, right? Which means that you've got to give up something. And whatever you're giving up is not anything that is, you know, going to suck the life out of you, right? Like, because Hakeem knows that we're in the minority. And so, you know, he has been very effective at making sure that we're getting things done. But overall, we're just not. I mean, we've done nothing but the bare minimum. We are six months behind on getting our budget done. Our budgets are only for a year. So I mean, like, half the budget was already over before we finally got it done. So it has been very frustrating because you know that there's people that are relying on you to bring about real change. I will tell you that the bright spot has been that in the 117th, before I came in, it was one of the most productive Congresses in the history of this country. And so we're just now, you know, reaping the benefits of that. And so I spent a lot of time pulling down money on some of the historic legislation that was passed and working with my stakeholders in the districts, my cities, my county elected officials, my nonprofits, trying to make sure that they know what all monies are available and how they can get it. And so right before we went on recess, or came back from recess, Secretary Buttigieg was in my district and we were receiving $80 million from the Department of Transportation, huge investment into the southern sector, which is an area that historically has been forgotten or just ignored. So we've been focusing on that, all of what happened in the 117th, because baby, ain't nothing happening in the 118th.
I know you have to be a little bit diplomatic, but whose fault is it, do you think, that nothing is getting done? Is, are there any people who stand out as being like, ugh, this person is really messing things up?
Why do you think I have to be diplomatic?
You don't have to be diplomatic. I was just giving you an out if you didn't want, if you didn't want to talk smack.
It's the whole MAGA crew. It starts off with Moscow Marge, and it ends with girly Gates. So, I mean, you know, like, all, and, and everybody in between, from the Paul Gosars of the world, to Higgins, like, it's, it's, it's a long list of them. But.
Do you have nicknames for all of them? You've got Moscow Marge, and you've got, you've got girly Gates.
Not why I'm calling them girly, right?
Oh, yes. Do you have, do you have other nicknames for people in that crew?
I do, I do. I, well, I just do nicknames at different times. Like, Ken Buck was Ken Nuck If You Buck. I thought it was very fitting, considering his positions a lot of times. But no, I, I do. I come up with, with little, and, and Moscow Marge has a lot of them. You know, I'm not going to tell you the one that Boebert had. It was probably inappropriate. But it was right after her little incident in, in the theater. So, yeah, no, I think it makes them more memorable. So people can be reminded of who it is that they need to avoid. But they have an oversized voice in our Congress. They are a minority of a minority. And because McCarthy, which I'm putting McCarthy on this list too, because he's the blame as well, because he wanted that title so bad, he gave up everything. So we have, you know, Chip Roy, who sits on the Rules Committee. They had to have some type of obstructionist that sat on rules. Him and Massey both sit there. And so, you know, the Democrats had to carry the rule on foreign aid because they have obstructionists on rules. But that was a deal that McCarthy made. They now can vacate the Speaker with one vote. That was a deal that McCarthy made. So a lot of the chaos that we're experiencing isn't just because you've got the chaos agents that are sitting in the House, but you have chaos agents that were enabled and empowered through the previous Speaker, and this current Speaker has decided not to rein them in. And so that's one of the reasons that it's a continual kind of cycle of just dysfunction.
It must be so frustrating, just working in a daycare center all day.
I've been calling it the insane asylum.
Okay, yeah.
And the patients seem to be running the asylum, but yes.
Yeah. You know, what's crazy is that any other job, people who acted like that at that job would not be working there. Like.
Listen, you couldn't act this way and work a minimum wage job. The fact that they getting paid so much money to act a fool is beyond me. But, you know, I, I think that it's important that the American people see who it is that is in office and what it is that they're doing. Now, if the American people decide that they like that, then fine. But my guess is that the average sane American is like, oh, hell no. We, we need somebody else. I don't know who, but it needs to be somebody else. And I think that's why Boebert is potentially on her way out the door. You know, she wasn't representing her district or her district's interests. She only won that seat by 500 votes. She almost lost it and it was not on the radar. She almost lost it to Adam Frisch, and he wasn't a red to blue candidate. He wasn't somebody that the Democratic Party was pouring into. He just went out there and did the work and recognized that she wasn't aligning with her district to the extent that now she wants to run in Ken Buck's district and try to get that seat because it's deeper red. You know, usually you run for office and you listen to the people in which you represent. But instead, she just wants to do what she wants to do. And so she's like, let me go find some constituents that will fit my agenda versus really working for the people. So I just could only hope and pray that Moscow Marge would be in trouble as well. But something tells me she ain't.
That is unfortunate. Okay, so Representative, we want to end on a little bit of a lighter note by talking about your sense of style, because you always frankly look fly as hell. So what inspires you when you're getting dressed for work? And how would you describe the way you approach your style?
It depends. It really depends. Okay, so let me tell y'all. First of all, it is very stressful. The cameras are always on you. Oh, my gosh, I am not used to that life. And the haters are always lurking. So I am very mindful. And we have makeup desk like everywhere in my life, even though I'm not made up right now. So in my Capitol office, I got a makeup vanity. In my house, I have one. And then even in the women's lounge, every once in a while, I have a little bag just to make sure that I can do my thing. But it depends on the hearing. So for instance, when I knew they were going to go after trans kids, I made sure that I put on blue and pink. And sometimes I feel like it's about to be like a real slaughter and death, so I'll put on black. I don't wear as much black as I normally would wear because in real life, black is my favorite color. And I wear black all the time. But other times, for the most part, I'm usually just trying to be bright and cheery. Because chances are, it's not going to be bright and cheery in the committee room. So, you know, I'll wear the pinks, I'll wear the oranges and the red. I wear like all kinds of different colors. And I always want to make sure that I look like what I imagine a young Congresswoman, young black Congresswoman to look like. Because we don't really see them that often. So I was like, what do you look like? You know? It's always been that you gotta have your, your St. John knits. And I'm not old enough to have all those St. Johns. And I definitely ain't got the pockets for all those St. Johns. So I'm like, what is it that a young black Congresswoman should look like? So I've been trying to try my own territory because it is not that many young black Congresswomen.
Well, hopefully, hopefully there will be more and led by your incredible example. Representative Jasmine Crockett, thank you so much for joining us this week on Hysteria. And please come back. This was a delight.
Thank you, Erin.